Okay, ladies and gentlemen, welcome. And we'd like to call the meeting of the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners to order. First, we'll be led in prayer by Commissioner Turner, and then Commissioner Joe Frank Jernigan will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Pray. Heavenly Father, thank you again, Lord, for the opportunity that we've been given, Lord, to represent our constituents. I ask that you be with us tonight as we make decisions that affect the community. We're also praying for Commissioner Schaefer's wife, Chris, who's had some surgery this week, Lord. I just ask that you go with them and that you put your healing hands on her and their family and help them be able to navigate these times after surgery. I ask that you be with our troops, Lord, that are around the world. There's a lot of challenges right now, Lord, and we just need you to intercede in so many areas and just send down your Spirit of peace upon a troubled world. I ask that you be with these individuals that are here tonight in public and those that are watching us at home. We give you all the praise and thank you, Lord. Amen.
[inaudible] To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Schaefer, Commissioner Piercy, Commissioner Jordan, Commissioner P., Commissioner Cook, Commissioner Jernigan, Commissioner Kush, Commissioner Reed, Commissioner Gurley, Commissioner Turner, Commissioner Allen, Commissioner Stevens, Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Baum, Commissioner Nipper, Commissioner Dodd, Commissioner Phillips, Commissioner McAdoo, Commissioner Kaplan, Commissioner Gooch, Commissioner Sereno. Twenty present.
Thank you. You have received a copy of the minutes of the last meeting. Do we have a motion concerning their approval? Commissioner Phillips?
Mr. Chairman, I've reviewed those minutes, find them in order, and approved it and moved that they be approved.
A second from Commissioner Cook. Did anyone have any corrections or additions? All right, if not, all of you in favor of that, then please say aye. Are there any pos? Thank you very much. First, we have a resolution of sympathy on behalf of a wonderful man that we've lost recently, Matt Murphy. Commissioner McAdoo, will you come forward, please?
Would the Murphy family please come forward? Bob, I see you back there. Before I read the resolution, I would like for each one of the Murphy family to give their name, so each one of you would know. That's brother Bob.
Betsy Murphy, Kitty Murphy.
Brett Murphy, Matt's son.
Aaron Murphy.
Alan, I don't even hear.
Before I get started, I can't get this wrong tonight because we got the Murphy family here and also we got the county attorney, Jim Coke, who was here in 1978. So anything I say wrong will be corrected instantly. Before I get started, each time I read a resolution, I like to give something that they've done over the past that really affected my life. I think I talked about Bob's father, but Matt was a very, very good individual. He was definitely a leader. And it's one thing about it, back in 1978, we had this room filled with cigar smoke and a little bit of everything else, but when Matt spoke, everyone listened. And he represented the city of Murfreesboro and the county of Rutherford very well. He was well thought of throughout. Resolution of sympathy. Whereas it was with great sadness that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners learned of the death of Matt B. Murphy III, a local attorney, political leader, descendant of the city's namesake, and a friend of many. And whereas Mr. Murphy served as a county commissioner for Rutherford County mainly in the 70s, was chairman of the Health, Education, Welfare Committee, and was instrumental in establishing the Rutherford County Ambulance Service. He also served for a period of time as chairman of the Rutherford County Commission, and due to the illness of then our county executive, he became county executive. He was also a member of the committee that negotiated with the Nissan Manufacturing Company that led to the location of the Nissan manufacturing plant in Rutherford County. Has most recently served as the attorney for the Rutherford County Public Building Authority. Whereas Mr. Murphy was very active in many civic activities and served on many boards and committees, including member and president of the Rutherford County Chamber of Commerce, served for over 30 years on the board of the current St. Thomas Rutherford Hospital, formerly Mill Tennessee Medical Center, and Rutherford Hospital, served on the board of the St. Thomas Healthcare Services, served on the Christie Houston Foundation Board. And whereas Mr. Murphy was named Business Legend of the Year in 2002 by the Rutherford County Chamber of Commerce and was honored by the National Business Journal as a Rutherford County Impact Award winner in 2013. And whereas he was a member of the Sigma Fraternity, St. Paul Episcopal Church, got it right, Stones River Country Club, Bell Me Country Club, Sons of American Revolution, and the Society of Cincinnati. And whereas Mr. Murphy is survived by his wife Catherine Davis Kitty Murphy, sons Matt B. Brick Murphy IV and his wife Sarah, Paul Davis Murphy, his wife Blair, three grandchildren, and brother Robert Murphy and his wife Betsy. And whereas Mr. Murphy was a true Southern gentleman who was respected by his peers, clients, and all who knew him. And whereas we know that his passing is called great sadness to his family and friends. Now therefore be it resolved that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners at its regular session on the 15th day of January 2015 does hereby extend sincere sympathy to the family of Matt Murphy III. And where it be further resolved that a copy of this resolution of sympathy be forwarded to the family of Mr. Murphy by the clerk of this body. And Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second, Commissioner Jordan and many others. All of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. We appreciate so much the service and life of Matt Murphy and thank all of you for being a part of that.
Like to say anything? Sure, sure, Bob.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have a resolution of recognition that's going to be presented by Commissioner
Dodd on behalf of young lady Claudia Smith.
Yes, I am privileged to follow recognizing the accomplishments of our elders now with the accomplishments of our youth. Obviously Claudia just sprinted off the basketball court. Thank you for interrupting your practice to join us, and I will proceed with the resolution. Whereas the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners recognized Central Magnet School student Claudia Smith on April 17, 2014, for winning the individual cross-country state championship. And since that time, Claudia was one of 12 national finalists in the High School Heisman Trophy selection held in New York City on December 12, 2014. And whereas administrators, teachers, coaches from across the nation submitted 30,000 candidates for consideration to receive the Wendy's High School Heisman Trophy with the criteria being high scholastic achievement, athletic success, and community service. And from that number, six female and six male students were selected as national finalists, with one of them being Claudia. And whereas ESPN spent some time with Claudia and her family and at Central Magnet filming for the televised ceremony from the downtown club in New York City, Wendy's awarded the 12 finalists and their families a trip to New York City culminating with the High School Heisman Trophy Awards Ceremony and the NCAA Heisman Awards Ceremony with Claudia as runner-up. And whereas, in addition to being a star athlete, Claudia has maintained a 4.0 GPA, that's correct, and a 34 on her ACT, outstanding. And whereas we express our sincere congratulations to Claudia's parents, Colleen and Roger Smith, for without their encouragement, none of this would have been possible. And also congratulations goes to teachers, coaches, and Central Magnet principal, Dr. John Ash. And whereas we commend Claudia for her dedication to not only being a successful athlete, but for her high scholastic achievement and community service. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that we extend this resolution of recognition to Central Magnet School student Claudia Smith for her many achievements, including being a runner-up of the Wendy's High School Heisman Trophy. Resolve this 15th day of January 2015. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second, Commissioner P. and everyone else, I'm sure as well. All of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Well, thank you very much, Commissioner Dodd.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, we have a resolution that will be presented by Commissioner Phillips with our appreciation to the New Vision Church. Commissioner Phillips?
Thank you, Mayor. I see Brick and Sarah and all the rest of the Murphy family leaving, and Brick and Sarah just don't try to silence that new voice coming out of the 17th District back there. Let her keep that up. Tonight, we have a resolution of appreciation for New Vision Baptist Church, and if I'm not mistaken, we have several of the leaders of that congregation here. And if Superintendent Salandy and Sheriff Arnold are here, I'd like for them to come up and stand with us. We also have a number of members that are on a team, I believe, at New Vision that have worked with the Correctional Center and with the Sheriff's Office. And Pastor John Spurgeon, are you here? If you would come up. And Pastor Ray Moss, Leslie Neelius, Craig Neelius, Don Sparks, Andrea Lee, Susan Daniels, Gary Patrick, Willie Neal, and Trish Gannon. If all of you guys are here, please come up. While they're coming up, the reason that these folks are here is because of the outstanding work that they've done with inmates that are serving time in the jail and in the correctional work center. And it just appears that month after month, our Public Safety Committee are recognizing the work that these folks are doing, so it's about time that we give them public recognition for all of the work that they've done and hopefully will continue to do to help people who are serving time in Rutherford County to leave and not come back and be really good citizens and help toward making Rutherford County better in the future. And it is our sincere belief that you guys are doing that. Resolution of appreciation for New Vision Baptist Church, whereas the Rutherford County Correctional Work Center and the Rutherford County Sheriff's Office have been fortunate to have the involvement and support of New Vision Baptist Church. And whereas the volunteer services provided by the church have included the following: individual clergy visits, baptisms, staff counseling, inmate hospital visits, church services within the facilities and at New Vision Baptist Church, monthly prayer breakfast, choir, financial classes, Bible studies, life skills, volunteer appreciation events, and Thanksgiving and Christmas activities, including 1,626 gifts for children of inmates. And whereas we would like to take this opportunity to express our appreciation and gratitude for their caring hearts and for providing these much-needed services to the inmates and their families. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners at its regular session on this 15th day of January 2015, does hereby extend appreciation to New Vision Baptist Church for their willingness to administer to the inmates incarcerated at the Rutherford County Correctional Work Center and the Rutherford County Sheriff's Office at the jail and to aid and assist their families. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to New Vision Baptist Church by the clerk of this legislative body. Resolve this 15th day of January 2015. Mr. Mayor, I move to approve.
Second, Commissioner Piercy and others. All of you in favor of that, then please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Phillips, and thank you very much, all you members. General. Next on the agenda item is public comments, and we do not have any public comments requested for tonight. So we'll now go to elections and confirmations. Commissioner Turner?
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. You'll find under J1 on your iPad a list of notaries that we need to approve. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for their approval.
All right. Second, Commissioner Phillips. Any additions to those at all? If not, all of you in favor of electing those notaries listed, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any pos? Thank you. That's unanimous.
And Snerian would like to announce the reappointment of Mr. John L. Beatty Jr. to the Consolidated Utility District Board of Directors. Mr. Chairman, I make, well, we don't need a motion for that.
Don't need a motion, just make the announcement, and we'll so note it in the minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Turner. There are no public hearings scheduled for tonight, so now we'll move to reports by standing committees. There is not any unfinished business. So our first report, we do have a report from our Purchasing Committee, their monthly meeting. Do we have a motion to approve that report? Commissioner Cook, do we have a second? Commissioner, well, Gooch. I don't look back that side of the room enough to keep you folks in mind sometimes. All right, all of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Next, we'll have Commissioner Jordan give us a report on Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee.
Good evening, everybody. I'll start off with item M2A, resolution, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general fund be amended as follows. Sheriff's Department's contributions and gifts, $10,200, and other contracted services, $10,200. That's the shop with the sheriff funds that the money rolls back into. Juvenile court data processing services, $2,520. Office equipment, $5,000, and decrease unassigned fund balance, $7,520. That is the fund, a copy machine that has died, and a few other things. Mr. Chairman, resolve this 15th day of January. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
And a second from, Mr. Turner. All right now, so we have a motion, second. Any questions? If not, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes, please.
19 yes, 0 no, 1 abstain. Motion passes.
Item M2B, resolution, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the special purpose fund be amended as follows. Sheriff's Department, increased revenue, $21,250 for asset forfeiture funds and increased expenditures for other equipment, $21,250. Resolve this 15th day of January 2015. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
All right, the second, Commissioner Nipper. Anyone have a question on this? All right then, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Everyone has now voted. Please record the votes.
Yes, ma'am.
20 yes, motion passes.
And I think, just as a matter of correction, check that first one. I think we had 20 yes previously, but it said 19 with 1 abstain. Anyway, we'll review that, we'll correct that if we need to. All right, continue on, Mr. Jordan.
Item M2C, resolution. Whereas at their meeting of December 17, 2014, Industrial Development Board of Rutherford County adopted a resolution authorizing the issuance of up to $40 million industrial development revenue, Series A notes for the acquisition, construction, and equipping of the Cosmo Lab Incorporated Manufacturing Facility located on Elan Farms Parkway. Therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee be and are hereby authorized to execute all necessary documents for the issuance of industrial development revenue, Series A notes for up to $40 million. In accordance with the resolution duly adopted by the Industrial Development Board of Rutherford County, Tennessee, a copy of the same being attached here to as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim. Resolve this 15th day of January 2015. Mr. Chairman, I so move. And I would say that this is a standard thing that we do where the county has no liability whatsoever, just a conduit for that.
Have a motion, do we have a second? Mr. Sereno, any further questions? All right then, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Mr. McAdoo?
McAdoo, please. All right, record the votes, please.
19 yes, 1 abstain, motion passes.
And I think that's a misread, but we will, because they're all...
Mr. Jernigan? It was sent to me.
On the screen here. Anyway, we will make that correction. It should reflect 20 yes on that vote as well. All right.
Item M2D, resolution. Whereas the Rutherford County Emergency Management Agency has received an Emergency Management Performance Grant Award from the Tennessee Emergency Management Agency in the amount of $69,350, requiring matching funds of $69,350. Whereas the purpose of the grant is to provide funding for training, exercises, planning, management, and administration and equipment for the period beginning October 1, 2013, and ending June 30, 2015. Therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and all other required officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee be and are hereby authorized to execute a grant contract with the Tennessee Emergency Management Agency for the Emergency Management Performance Grant in the amount of $69,350, requiring matching funds of $69,350. A copy of the same attached here to as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim. Resolve this 15th day of January 2015. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a second from, Mr. Kaplan. Any discussion or questions on that? If not, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes, please.
19 yes, 1 abstain, motion passes.
Again, it's not recording properly, but we will take that under advisement and correct it. It is on my screen, but when he gets his totals, they're not coming through.
He did abstain, and so the tally count is 19 yes and 1 abstain.
But it showed, oh, I'm sorry. So it actually is an abstained vote. It just shows on here as he's voted. I'm with you. So do we have abstains on every, all votes then, three times?
I think Commissioner Johnson's on the first vote. Each one of them, I think.
Okay. I'm sorry, I can't see that screen up there, so you can see more. You have more information than I do. All right, so my error there in that the report on the vote that he gave is correct. All right, thank you, Health and Education Committee. There is not a report tonight, and there's not a report from the Property Management Committee. We do have one resolution from the Public Safety Committee, so we need to, who's coming forward on that? Who is our public safety person? Mr. Schaefer's not here, so we need the vice chair of that committee to do that. So Mr. Gurley has his iPad there. One resolution.
Resolution, whereas the attached contract and amendment to contract between Rutherford County Juvenile Detention Center and Lauderdale County for housing of juvenile offenders, a copy of said contract and amendment to contract being attached hereto as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein at length as if set forth verbatim are in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the appropriate officials for and on behalf of Rutherford County be and hereby are authorized to enter into and execute for and on behalf of Rutherford County the contract and amendment to contract with Lauderdale County for housing of juvenile offenders, resolve this 15th day of January. I make a motion to approve.
Second, Commissioner Turner and others. But anyone have any questions? If not, all of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Gurley. Okay, next, we have a resolution, one resolution from our Public Works and Planning Committee. Commissioner Jernigan.
Okay, Public Works and Planning Committee has a resolution to approve agreement with the City of Muffler Bar for a 30-yard open-top container for scrap metal to be placed at the city's 648 West Main Street Convenience Center. Whereas the agreement attached hereto is Exhibit 1 between the City of Muffler Bar and Rutherford County for a 30-yard open-top container for scrap metal collected to be placed at the city's 648 West Main Street Convenience Center is in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners to approve the agreement with the City of Muffler Bar pursuant to the terms and provisions contained in said agreement. Be it further resolved that the appropriate officials for and on behalf of Rutherford County be and hereby are authorized to execute for and on behalf of Rutherford County's said agreement with the City of Muffler Bar, resolve this 15th day of January 2015, I so move.
Second, Commissioner Dodd. Any questions regarding this? If not, all of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any pos? Thank you very much. That is carried. Okay. Next, we have a resolution to amend the commission rules from our Steering Legislative and Governmental Committee, and a second resolution to amend Rule 4. All right, so Commissioner Gooch will come forward and give us those recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Steering does have two items for your consideration. The first one is a resolution to amend the commission rules establishing a consent agreement. Whereas the county steering committee has recommended the establishment of a consent agenda for the purpose of conducting county business in the county commission meetings. And whereas a consent agenda will facilitate the commission and county in the exercise of conducting county commission business during commission meetings, and is deemed in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County, Tennessee. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners as follows. One, the Amendment to Commission Rules, Rule Number 3, General, attached heretofore and is incorporated herein by reference as if set forth in length verbatim, be and the same, is hereby adopted as an amendment to the county commission rules. Number two, the commission handbook be and is, and the same is amended as set forth in the further attachment heretofore incorporated herein as reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim, whatever that means. Resolve the 15th day of January 2015, I so move, Mr. Chair.
And second, Commissioner Baum, did you, second, or you just want to, Commissioner Phillips, second, you have a question? Okay, Commissioner Baum.
You need a second?
Yeah, we have a second.
You've got a second. I may have some concerns about this, and so I just wanted to make a comment or two. I understand what the consent agenda is. It's a way of bundling different amendments together so that you just, you sort of vote on the whole bundle all at once, and there's no discussion about the amendments that are in the bundle. It's just sort of an up or down vote. When I look at our agenda, the only committee that we have that typically has an extensive list of resolutions or amendments is the Budget Committee. And sometimes there are quite a few of them. But they involve taxpayer dollars, and I feel like we're stewards of the taxpayers' money. And so I do feel some obligation, a lot of obligation, to hear the amendments that involve taxpayer dollars from the Budget Committee. The other committees, like I mentioned, don't usually have long agendas or a lot of resolutions. Now, I understand the arguments in favor of a consent agenda. It's efficient, and if any commissioner has any concern with any of the items, they can request that that item be pulled from the consent agenda, and it will be, and it can be discussed more extensively. And I realize consent agendas are used in other places by other governments and other entities, so this is an accepted practice. But I just feel like there are certain advantages to examining each resolution separately. I think it helps everyone be informed. For the commissioners, I know we would be obligated to read the amendments before the meetings, and so if we do that, we know what the resolutions are going to say. Nevertheless, sometimes a person who reads the amendment will get up and take just a second or two before they read the amendment to give us a brief introduction. I still think it helps to hear the amendment read out loud. There's also a lot of our constituents who are watching our meetings on TV, and I think it helps them stay informed to hear the resolutions read out loud, because I don't think there's any guarantee that they're reading these resolutions before our meetings. I think it also gives us the opportunity to ask questions. I realize if we do have questions, we can break the resolution out from the consent agenda so that we can ask those questions. But I think it facilitates questioning when the resolutions are read separately, more so than if they're packaged together. I know as a commissioner, if the whole thing's packaged together and I have a little question that seems trivial, I might be less apt to ask the question, because I don't want to interrupt the flow and have to pull something out of the consent agenda. I guess I just want to close by saying I really appreciate the effort by the steering committee to help make our meetings more efficient. I think that there is a lot of value in that. But I'm concerned about this, just because I think it is our job to listen to these resolutions before we cast a vote. And because of those concerns, I just wanted to take a minute to raise some of these points so that we could think a little bit more about this.
Another discussion. Commissioner Stevens, and then Commissioner Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Four years ago, when I got elected, I would have been absolutely opposed to this, because when we got to the meeting, stacks of paper were handed to us right before the meeting started, and nobody had time to read over those things. And then shortly after that, I was able to get those things emailed to me before the meeting, so I could read them, and the other commissioners started to get them emailed to them. Then eventually, the resolutions went out to everybody by email before the meetings, and now they're on the county's SharePoint site. So anybody in the world can get on our SharePoint site a day or two before the meeting if they're interested in what's on our agenda or on the consent agenda, and everything that's on there is going to be available for them to read and inspect ahead of time. And if they have a question about it, or if they have an objection to it being voted on by the commission in the consent agenda, all they have to do is call a commissioner and ask that it be pulled off and voted on separately. So, you know, given that the information's available now ahead of time to everybody in the public, I think this will make our meetings much more efficient and let us focus on the things that need our attention the most, instead of the routine matters where there's, you know, never any discussion or dissension on those votes. And I have full confidence that Mayor Burgess, as our chairman, will use his discretion to pick those items which belong on the consent agenda. And like Commissioner Baum said, if anyone has an objection to any of those, all you have to do is stand up and ask that they be voted on separately, and that will be done. So I think it's a good resolution, and I hope that you support it.
Mr. Jordan.
I think Commissioner Stevens covered most everything, but I didn't go to the steering committee meeting, because I didn't want to seem like I was trying to be self-serving, because I'm the guy that has to get up and read those things, at least this year. But I can guarantee this to budget chairman, we're not going to put anything of any magnitude on the consent agenda. It's on, you know, I sit up here and read for a thing that might be a $50 transfer in postage or something from one line item to the other, and that stuff, we don't need, in my opinion, waste our time with here and stuff. So, and I would appreciate any help on not having to read so much stuff, at least till the end, as long as I'm the budget chairman. So I think this is a good thing. We're not trying to hide anything from anybody, and as everybody said, anybody can ask to have, any one person can ask to have something removed from the consent agenda. So hopefully this will pass, and we can move along. The City of Murfreesboro's been doing this for at least 10 years now. I remember when they implemented, and they've had great success with it.
Another discussion. Commissioner Nipper.
Let me say that I came from a group that has used consent agendas for the past few years. And the time that I was there, I kept seeing the agenda grow and grow and grow, to where the meeting could only, you know, last a very short time. I have a real problem with it. There's, like Mr. Baum's commissioner said, that if you have a question, you might be hesitant to have that pulled out, because you might think you're the only one that has an objection to it, and you kind of let it go. So, like I said, I've seen the consent agendas grow and grow and grow to where, you know, it's like a 15-minute meeting. So, thank you.
Another discussion. Commissioner Dodd.
Thank you. Who decides what items are bundled? Is it from the committee or from the chairman?
It would be from the commission chairman.
Person of the commission.
Repeat that.
Well, the commission chairman would set the agenda, the consent agenda. Currently, the commission chairman is a mayor, but we put in the commission chairman, because we could theoretically elect our own chairman, but...
If Mr. Jordan has items, I'm going to ask the same question another way. Can he bundle his items from his committee and recommend that to the chairman, and then they're presented to us?
That's right. And he can say, he could request that certain items be taken off of the consent agenda prior to the agenda being written, so those would be read. And as steering chairman, I could make that same request. And it just takes one commissioner to request that an item not be included in the consent agenda.
But any one of you could request, I mean, you could suggest that it be placed on a consent agenda. The commission chairman may or may not do that, and his judgment might be different from yours. But the first thing on your agenda after we get through these resolutions, et cetera, will be a vote on whether the consent agenda is acceptable. And at that point in time, any one of you can suggest and make a motion. You don't even have to make a motion. You just say, I want this particular item removed from the consent agenda and placed under one of the standing committee reports, and that will be an automatic given. It doesn't take a vote on that. You can look at this agenda today, there's only one or two things that might be considered on this agenda that would have been put in the consent agenda. That grant contract with TIMA has been repetitive for years and years and years, and it's a standard process, so that might have been on the consent agenda. And other than that, I'm not sure anything else would have been on the consent agenda tonight. Just an example. If you'll think back, a few months ago, we had, I don't know how many grants, but there were eight or 10 of these ongoing repetitive grants, and some of those had a page on each resolution almost, so some of those would likely have been included. Other discussion or questions? All right, this has some need, I think, for us just to take a roll call vote so that everybody can express their opinion properly. So please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Everyone has voted, and I can't see how you voted, so I'll just tell Mr. Robertson to record the votes.
Sixteen yes, four no. Motion passes.
Thank you. Let's see, you have another resolution, I believe, Mr. Gooch.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, before the next resolution...
Okay, Mr. Phillips.
I might suggest that we give this consent agenda six months and let the steering committee revisit that to see what type of feedback the rest of the commission gives it, and we won't just let it go out there. So just revisit it in six months, if that's a fair thing to do for everyone, and see how it goes. It may be that we don't like it, but it may be that it's gone great, and just to revisit the thing, if we can put it on our calendar, Mr. Chairman...
I'll make sure it's on, at least by our June agenda.
Thank you.
I think that's a good suggestion, certainly.
Our next final resolution is to amend Rule Number 4 of the commission rules for the digest and minutes to be posted on the Rutherford County SharePoint site within 14 days of the meeting. Whereas Mr. Chair of the county steering committee recommends that the legislative digest and the minutes of the county commission be posted on the Rutherford County SharePoint site within 14 days of the county commission meeting. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners as follows. The Amendment to Commission Rule Number 4, Minutes Attached Heretofore and Incorporated Herein by Reference as if Set For Herein at Length Verbatim be and the same, is hereby adopted as the amendment to the county commission rules, resolved this 15th day of January 2015. I so move, Mr. Chair.
Second, Commissioner Gooch. Any discussion or questions? All right, all of you in favor of this, then, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That is unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay, now, under any other business, the first item on there is an attorney-client executive session regarding our Circuit Court Clerk's used software system. And basically, everyone in the room, we're going to be going off the air. Everyone in the room, with the exception of all of our commissioners, our attorney, and me, the mayor, the rest of you will have to be excused. I'd like for our clerk and him to hang around, so they can come back when we finish the meeting up. But all of you will have to be excused from the room at this moment. And Mr. Sheriff, just be sure nobody's lingering so close by as you guys go out. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're back live and on the air, and we have been in executive session with our attorney regarding our software system that was being implemented in our Circuit Court Clerk's office. And we're going to let Mr. Cope just to make a brief remark about what we've actually done here, so that we can put it for the record.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Chairman, we have had a wholesome discussion with the commission just to provide information relative to issues involving the Circuit Court Clerk and the implementation of a software system there in the clerk's office with a company called New Dawn. We've answered questions from the commissioners. We have not made any decisions. We did not deliberate toward decisions or vote on anything. We simply shared information and answered questions, so that the commission could be updated on the status of those matters. And so we're now ready to go back into regular session.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cope. Is there any other business that anyone wishes to bring before the body? Mr. P.
Saturday, the 17th, there's a Country Hand Breakfast out at Ketchikan Fire Department. We'd like to invite everybody out. It's from 6:00 to 10:00. After that, I think Ms. Cook's got something going on touring the school, don't you?
Okay. Anyone else have any other business? I would like to remind each of you, and I hope you all got a notification from the state, that your ethics disclosure statements are due in, on or before January 31st. So be aware of that, and if you, you can go online at tennessee.gov/conlict and do it all online electronically if you so choose. But if you have a need for a hard copy, call my office, and Vicki will be happy to help you. It takes, yeah, okay. Any other discussion tonight? If not, we are adjourned, and thank you very much.